It's 6:30 and we need to call an order. And Georgiana, do you want to take the roll call?
Director Dan Whitland.
Here.
Director Ann Rice is at the desk. Director Mark Solak.
Here.
Vice President Cliff Jacobson.
Here.
President Bill Kellogg.
Here. Okay, it says here, if you've got a cellphone, you're supposed to silence it.
Thank you.
The next thing is what you're giving me the hand sign it's about, Warren. But before that, we're going to have a prayer. Prayer comes before this. If it was a thought, it would come after the ... Yes, you got it. Pretty good language that we've got going here. Dan, do you want to try it again?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Heavenly Father, we have a special occasion this evening that we're meeting here about. You know the end from the beginning. You know what's going to happen long before it happens. And we pray that whatever it is that's going to be the best for PID, we will indeed make that decision with everyone's assistance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's see. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I have a little paragraph I have to read in the beginning of all these meetings. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per seat speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. What, Warren? You have something?
Somebody has to go first. Thank you. Good evening, President Kellogg and board. These are the times that try men's souls, or more politically correct, the people's souls. Those souls have been touched. Their hearts have been touched. The people's hearts have been touched because people care. In this community, people care. The heart has energized the brain, and the brain has touched the tongue and the body. And people have spoken, and people have acted. Those same people are voters, and they are your constituents. You're elected here because of the people. You should be reminded and you should ask yourself, how do I give direction to this agency that maintains the best interest of the people that you represent? The purpose of our government being of the people, by the people, and for the people also means the people don't want career politicians acting in their own best interests or in the interests of special interests. You are a talented and you are a capable board. We, the people, will appreciate your consideration on our behalf. May God bless this board and this special agency. Thank you for your time here.
Thank you, Warren.
Thanks, Warren.
Does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, Barry.
About four and a half years ago, I started to attend these meetings. That was during the drought, and there was a lot of misinformation floating about about restrictions, allocations, fines, and penalties, et cetera. The only person in the room that provided to me a calm and guiding influence was George Barber. George made it clear that the district could meet the state requirements without penalizing the water users of paradise. The next problem facing the district was how to meet the federal and state standards regarding the discharge of processed water. The majority of the board at that time evaluated several plans and left the process water treatment plan as the final alternative, but they did not conduct a final vote on that project. George lent his expertise and guidance to the board during this process. Concurrent with the discussions on the solution to the water process, process water problem, was a rate increase to pay for it. George and his staff developed a tiered rate increase plan, and the board voted to go with it. The public vehemently protested, demonstrated against the plan and how it was presented. They thought it was just plain, quote-unquote, rude. George then created the current structure under Prop. 218, and the board approved it. We all know that this resulted in the recall movement. During the recall process, there were several public meetings where George was exposed to vehement criticism, filthy gestures and comments, and expressions of vitriol that can only be called hateful. Much of this criticism came from the public, but some came from some of the board members, too. Through it all, George remained steadfast, but I'm sure it took a toll on him. Lastly, let me say that George Barber has proven himself to be an honest, honorable, and dedicated servant. I know he will be successful in his future endeavors, and I hope that someday I can say the same about each member of this board. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to have a say? Okay. We're going to go to closed session. What we're going to do first is the board members, and Dustin, our attorney, will be in the closed session, and we'll invite George in probably in a short time after that. So if this time, we'll go to closed session in that room. And Ann, who's not here, who's sick, will be on the telephone with us, and we're hoping that she'll pick up the broadcast here so she can give her input in the closed session. I don't know if it's going to work out here. We'll go to closed session. And I have no idea. And I will start off by basically saying what I'm going to say, and each director in turn will talk about what the points they want to make. It may take us a few minutes to get through this, but the main thing to remember is the ER and the post got it wrong. George resigned last Friday afternoon. We received emails in the afternoon. I didn't open mine until 6 o'clock at night, and I was shocked. And the rest of us were, too. We did not expect this. And to make it sure nobody was being fired tonight, what we were doing is accepting George's terms on his resignation. And we did accept the terms he put together in his letter. We talked about an intern, but we'll probably have another closed session in a week or two to go over that some more, because George has agreed to work until April 21st. After the directors are through their comments, I'm going to ask Cedar Creek to make a presentation, which I've talked to them earlier this week about, on what they did when Jim Pastorene got hired, the same sort of pamphlet and so forth that went out and where it went for the board, because we're debating, we haven't made any decisions, on what kind of publicity we want to put out and so forth. So tonight was just to get all of us on board with the resignation and with the benefits that George is going to receive per his contract. So our case, he's probably going to be here talking for a few minutes, so Cliff's going to talk. Oh.
Well, first of all, yes, I was extremely surprised as well. I thought that we'd gotten all of the angst and anxiety behind us, and we were actually processing as a good board, and George was doing a good job of stepping up to the plate as manager. And we have some pretty serious issues facing us with the modification of the recycle at the plant for our permit and other issues, and we were working through them. We still have to deal with those. I feel less confident now with George stepping down that we're going to get it all done in a timely manner, because I don't think any of us on the board have the knowledge and experience that George had on simply the length of time he's been dealing with these things. So we're going to have to bring ourselves up to speed and figure out how to process that, which I'm sure we will. But I did want to say that I came on the board because I was frustrated, just like everybody else, and I thought that management wasn't doing a good job. Since I've been on the board, I don't know what happened prior to my being on the board, and I can't really speak to that, but since I've been on the board, I think I've had a really good relationship with everybody on it and George, and he has conveyed everything to me in a timely manner. And I think he's done a pretty good job on some very difficult issues that he's had to deal with that not only need to be done, but that need to be expressed to the public in terms that don't demean them and that they understand, so that they don't just think that, you know, that we're just adrift up here, not getting the job done correctly. So again, I'm surprised and I'm a little disappointed in seeing George leave, and we're going to be hard-pressed to find somebody to replace the knowledge that he has. I'm sure we will, but it's not going to be easy. And I thank him for how he's related to me since I've been here and helped me with processing the issues we're dealing with, and I wish him good health and success in his next endeavor.
Yeah, and being the short timer here on the board, I do have to say that I really appreciate the help that George has given me. Every time I went for information, he was very forthcoming, and I really appreciate that. And I was really looking forward to working with you, George, and I'm sorry to see you go as well, so thank you.
Ann is sick, and she's not able to participate anymore. She's gone to bed for the night. She was on the phone with us and gave her opinion and so forth, which is similar to what you're hearing from the other directors. Dan?
Relatively new, too, but the short term, the exposure has been pleasant. Thank you very much. And I do need to make sure that all of you people know that as we proceed, we will try to do as much as we can, as often as we can, right out in the open. I hate the word transparent, it's so overused these days. But please talk to us lots. We need your input. We need advice, counsel, ideas, anything and everything on how to proceed. We will try to have, we're going to have to try to accomplish what we're going to have to fairly soon, but yet we certainly hope we don't rush so much that we make any mistakes. So we need your prayers, we need your ideas. Talk to us lots.
Now we'll open it to public questions of the board about, if you have any questions of individual directors as we go, about what they had to say or questions at all. And if you would please come up to the podium and introduce yourself, and you have five minutes. So who's first? Anyone?
Bob Dickinson. So as I understand that we're going to continue with George until April 21st, he's physically going to be here still making decisions.
That is correct.
Well, there's a few people, in my opinion, think that that's a mistake. I strongly disagree with that. If a person is thinking about retirement, he's retiring. A person is going to another job, he's going to be thinking about that. You need to move on and close out his desk, collect keys, and get busy looking for somebody new, or put somebody in charge in the interim. And I highly recommend it, because there's too many things that could go wrong in a short period of time. You're not, in my opinion, you're not going to get any benefit from him hanging around for a month or so. It might be only bad. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Hi, Barry.
Just a couple of comments, no questions. Saying that the board should seriously consider hiring a professional recruiter to help you with this process. And that recruiter should not limit themselves to just Butte County, but cast a wide net to find the most qualified person available. That recruiter and the board should work together to develop, in writing, the education and experience requirements along with a basic job description. Recruiter will also help you with this. He can also help you with a compensation package. And the successful applicant should be allowed to implement board policy without undue interference from board members. The board's job is to develop the policy, not micromanage the district. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment they'd like to make? Ask once again, anybody have any comments? Okay, thank you. We're going to call on Cedar Creek to talk about the recruitment package that they put together for using Jim Pastorene's thing that he answered and possible or anything, and tell us the area that it'll cover. So they've done this once before for us, and they have copies of some of their literature here, so. Tanya, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We have, sure, we have worked with school districts seeking superintendents and principals. We are not a headhunter firm in any way, shape, or form, but when the board was looking to, when the management was looking to hire a new treatment plan superintendent, George had asked if we could put something together about the district. And this is the type of, this is what we did back in 2011, and it's pretty typical of what you can do when you're seeking information from people who may be interested or may know someone who's interested in a similar position. So it's the kind of thing that could be utilized by a headhunter agency, it sounds so weird, headhunters, you know, by an executive search firm, and it's the kind of thing that could be utilized by them, and you guys could create with your own input, or they may do it as part of their package, I don't know. But Bill had asked what we did. This is, this is when Jim Passanisi was hired, as I said, in 2011. What's pretty typical of it is that it talks about not just the position, but the district, because that's what's going to be important as well as the community. So if you had any questions about it, I printed some out for you. We can do that. Last time, as I recall, we printed 450 of them, and they went out to Aqua people, because it was for treatment plans. So I think George had found the list for us of people who were in Aqua who had that level of certification that was required. So you'll see it was bulk mailed out there, so that's how they went out. But again, that kind of thing is pretty typical, and the search firm that you use can do that kind of thing. We'd be glad to help you with it if you wanted. I was just asked if I could provide this. Yes, Cliff?
Can we also obtain this in, say, a PDF format if we wanted to email it?
I do have a PDF, and I'll be glad to email it to Georgiana, and Georgiana, you could ...
Well, not this particular one, but if we have you draft one up for the new position.
It was created as PDF at that time, too, and it was also electronically available. So when we created it, it was for print as well as the electronic.
Good. How long would it take you to put something together for us with the new?
You know, this tells a lot about the community that hasn't really changed, that we could update the median age. People who are coming into a new community typically, when we do it for school districts, they want to, they want to know what kind of a community they're going into, and that really didn't change much. The job description obviously would be different, the specifics of the position, but if you wanted to take something like this and modify it, we could do it in a couple hours for you. So we're looking at $170 for modifying the existing one. If you want to start from scratch, that's fine, too. And if you wanted us to work in conjunction with an outside firm, that's fine, and if they want to do it themselves, that's fine. But there's your ideas for what you've got going on.
I'm sure we'll use you in some form, we'll just have to figure out what that is.
Any other questions, Tanya?
No, these days electronically, there are so many avenues available, and that's when I say we need communication. You got any ideas? Get them to Bill.
Anything else, Bill?
No, you did just what we talked about the other day.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
It was a very good thing you sent out for Jim, when we got Jim. Now, is there any questions from the audience about advertising or promoting the position in the community, and how far should we go with it? There was some debate by the directors. We plan to have another meeting to go over this stuff and make decisions, maybe next week or the week after. What we need is any input you have and thoughts about promoting the job, and certainly every one of you knows somewhere around 200 people, so if you know somebody somewhere that you think might be interested in the job, let them know. But how about any input from anybody? So far, the employees have been very quiet, and I haven't heard a peep out of you, but you weren't here to hear a peep, or make any sound, you were here to listen to what we came up with, so. Done? Okay. George will be helping design his own page as it goes out. You could call it a plaque, or parchment, or whatever he'd like, and it's going to highlight all the projects that he's done here, the good projects and so forth. We don't want anything negative in it, and we want him to have it and celebrate his 12 years of servicing, serving the district, and in the future, he'll be able to give that to hopefully his employers where he's going. And he's asked us not to say anything about where he's going. He's shared it with the staff, but he hasn't shared it with the public. And certainly, you're not going to share it with the paper. For your first shot, we know you're a rookie, so we'll take that in consideration. Anyway, any other comments here for the good of the order? Oh, okay. And I do from back here, you want me to stand up? No, you come up here, everybody, you see you, you can't take your picture back there. You've got to come here where they get your picture. I have to excuse the glasses, I've got a red eye. Okay. Not that I don't want to see you, guys. Whatever. I will take my hat off in remembrance of a man who told me it was disrespectful to not take your hat off, so.
I did, and I wanted to take my hat off. Lauren Harvey, I've been here since 1947. I live here because I love it here. I've been trained in a couple of different fields. I could have went a lot of places and made a lot more money, but I would have had to live in those places. And so what I, I hope the board, and I hope the future manager that you're going to hire, you don't incentivize by paying, trying to outpay other districts and other things. What I'd like to see happen is I'd like to see us hire somebody who wants to be here, who realizes they're not making as much money as they'd be making in LA or San Francisco or some other place, but they love it here and they're willing to work for local, I don't want them to work for nothing, but it's crazy. Just as an example, I was just talking a few minutes ago about it, we hired, you guys remember, we hired the fire chief. We hired a fire chief from Yakima, Wisconsin, about four years ago, you remember that? And we had to pay more money than the guy before because we wanted a good guy. Well, what happened was, three years later, he quit, and he went back to Yakima. Why'd he do that? Because the guy that he worked for was going to retire, and he couldn't become chief of fire there for another three years, so he went and became a chief here and got a little retirement from it, and the minute that guy retired, of course, he quit and went back to where he was going. So see, paying him more money didn't matter, because he went to where he loved to be. And so I'd just like us to all remember that when we're hiring somebody, okay, let's pay him a fair wage. I don't say don't pay him a fair wage, but what I do say is, let's try to get somebody who wants to put their time in in paradise. And it just makes more sense. We hired a chief of police, she's going to be retiring soon. You know, you just, you just can't buy a person. You can't buy them. You've got to have somebody that, hopefully, we can find somebody that loves to be here and can do the job and pay them a decent wage and call it a day. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
That's good, Lauren. My personal opinion is that we need to take it easy. We don't have to get this accomplished overnight. We'll open the lines of communication, take our time, do a good job, find the right person. We need everybody's prayers.
Marcia McGill. Marcia McGill, is that reading?
We hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. There are a lot of people in town that have a lot of faith in this board, and we're very supportive, and we'd like that you are taking your time gathering facts and being thorough. We are aware that you have a huge job in front of you, because there were things that were not addressed. I think it's wise to take the time to find a person that you can work with, where you'll all be on the same page. We may have to look outside the county or not, and this is a hungry market. There's a lot of unemployment. There are people that want to be here, that want to work with you, that want to make this town a great town, really want to serve the people. And we're paying attention, and we want to be served, and there's a whole lot of people that already really thank you for your dedication, so have some faith, we do. And we're here watching and taking notes, and we have a, we'll come to you individually with more ideas. There's a whole subgroup of support for you people.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Does anybody else now would like to speak? Anyone on staff or anyplace else?
I move we ...
And you want to say something more, Dan?
No, I move we adjourn.
We need to adjourn, okay. Wait a minute, Cliff is through yet.
Well, first of all, I think we, I think we have to, this is, item four has to be an action item. I'm not sure how we word it, because it's a little vague, but we need to have a vote on that, and then comments, and then I think we can adjourn, correct?
We really don't.
Well, it says action may be taken on general manager recruitment and replacement, so I think that I move that we go forward with that process, that is the ...
I had assumed with what the president said we were going to, yeah.
But I mean, that's item number four.
That would be the meeting in a week or two weeks?
In a week or two, or whenever.
Correct. So I move that we, that we do take this action going forward as stipulated in item four, general manager recruitment and replacement process.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more comments?
I would like to make one comment. Because in all fairness, I want, I want everybody to know, both, you know, the public that's here, because I'm one of you, I'm a customer, too, but I want you to know that we don't take any of this lightly. And I want to address your comments specifically about having George go away today. As a business owner, I get that people will have a short timer's attitude when they're going somewhere else, but, and I made a comment in earlier, when you're flying the plane, and I'm sitting in the copilot seat, and I really don't know how to fly the plane, I'd rather that you get it on the ground before you say, "Take over." And so I think that a transition period is appropriate, and whoever we pick to be the interim manager until we find that correct person to replace him, we don't want to just dump it on him and say, "Figure it out." We would like the fact that George is gracious enough to say, "I could go tomorrow, but I'm not. I will help you make that transition and make sure that I don't leave you wondering what to do next." And I appreciate that, and I applaud him for that, and I think we all should, because that's the correct thing to do, and he's doing the correct thing. I just wanted to point that out. And so now I'll say, yes.
Okay, I have one last comment. In George's resignation letter to the board, he thanked us for his career here and all that, but one of the important things, and I think one of the most important, and this is why I asked for the staff to be here tonight, he complimented the staff and said that you guys are the ones that run the place day to day and do the super service that we have out of this district. And we're looking forward to the district even doing a better job, if that's possible. But we do appreciate every one of you in management positions, and we appreciate the people that work underneath you in the organization here. So we're looking forward to your continued action and contributions, and until 21st of April, most things will not change here unless something, somebody comes along that it's early, you couldn't believe, for the job. But I'm more optimistic than they are. I think we'll have the job filled within 30 days. So with that comment, and you'll see already that we agree to be friends, but we also agree to disagree. So it'll be interesting to see what we come up with in a week or two as we progress through this. But tonight, this was meant to get centered on George and get that settled and everything, and that's what we've done. That was the only thing we really wanted to do tonight, so it's done. And we thank you all for coming, and I thank the reporter for being here, and hopefully he won't take my comments too seriously, because he's a new reporter. And it looks like Dustin, you'd want to say something?
We haven't finished the vote yet.
The motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Georgiana.
That's four to zero.
Yes, four to zero. If Ann was here, she'd vote for it, too. So the ... So, Ann made the motion for adjournment, and it doesn't take a second, so, good night.
Thank you. How you doing?